Yeah, we're going live, Mr Chair.
Got it. Right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting of Planning, Environment and Services Committee. To receive apologies for absence of councillor Inghough, councillor Graham Johnson, which is why councillor Linda Johnson is attending in his stead as the sub, and councillor Alison Healy, which is why councillor Hopkins, a sub, is attending as well. Thank you. And declarations to declare declarations of interest by any member of the council in respect of the agenda items listed below. Members declaring interest should identify the type of interest being declared. And 3B, to note dispensations to any member of the council in respect of agenda items listed below. So moving on to item four, and it's to note the meeting of the Planning, Property and Services Committee, it was called then, I held on the 5th of October. This has been previously circulated and it was agreed at full council on Monday, the 25th of October.
Yep.
Delegated responses. Item one on the delegated responses. I believe, no, it isn't item one.
One's River Island. And actually, there's a word missed out, it should say to remain viable.
Yeah.
Is she nitpicking?
Just a query, Mr Chair, because I've subbed in. I haven't had a chance to have a look at these beforehand. I'm just a little confused because the agenda I see talks about the minutes from the 2nd of November because the October 1st already.
It does. It does not.
Sorry, Mr Chair.
I've got I've got here delegated responses. Item enclosed, just pointed out something as well. Item one. Walker Gate, Beverley.
I've got Flemington.
Yeah, do you perhaps have last month's agenda, Mr Chair?
No, I've got Tuesday. The agenda item is Tuesday.
What date have you got?
Tuesday, the 2nd of November, 2021.
It's not that, it's December, well, it's November.
30th of November, yeah.
I've already turned my calendar over, so I'm totally confused now.
Yeah, sorry. Right. Matt, can you put up the agenda for me, please?
Yeah.
Till I crank up my laptop.
Well, the third, the next item, Mr Chair, is the delegated planning, which I will if you bear with me, I'll share.
Yeah.
No, that's last time.
No, it isn't. This is this time.
Well, I've got River Island.
Yeah, the delegated planning is an appendix, is item five.
Oh, right, hang on.
Yeah, right, so what I'd like to do, members, is to revisit this item. Item one, land north of, northwest of 191 Grovelove Road.
So, Mr Chair, the only error on here is I've misspelled, miscalculated the year. We're obviously further than the year 202 on that sheet. The delegated planning is an appendix, so one of these supporting documents. So the first, the first one is the land northwest.
Why have I got River Island, you?
Because that's the first application where we're looking at the items this evening.
You need to go right, you need to go right down to the bottom of the agenda.
All right.
Just keep scrolling down.
Ah, got it, got it, thank you, thank you. And I like the year 202, I think that might be simpler.
So this, this item was one of the delegated ones due to the timescales. And at the time of responding to it, we look, we look at the the material considerations, and there hadn't really been any concerns raised by residents. However, residents have contacted councillors and submitted comments subsequently. So it's to, it's to relook at it this evening to make an additional comment, I believe, Mr Chair.
That's right. No, could we all mute, please, first and foremost? And then can you raise your hands up when you, when you want to speak? That'd be better, right. Anne. Can you unmute? Thank you.
Just abusing me now. Is it the land next to the pub again?
No, no, it isn't. It's on Grovelove Road, Anne. It's, if you come up Beaver Road, turn left onto Grovelove, go past Neville Avenue. It's, it's the first 10 foot on your right.
There are private allotments here.
Yeah.
Right.
I believe councillor Host is also indicated to speak, Mr Chair.
Right, okay. Go ahead, David.
Yes, I actually had manned up well before we came to this item. We've got two sets of delegated planning. And one of them is after we exclude the public. That clearly is an error, and they should both be taken before we exclude the public.
I'm not with you.
Right, in, in, in the copy of the agenda that I got, there are two sets of delegated, of the planning. One of them is placed after that we make a decision to exclude the public. That clearly should not be the case.
There, there, there isn't anything after that. The, the agenda is items 1, 2, 1, 2, I'm afraid the numbering has gone, gone to be some, there should be 1, 2, 8, 9, 10, sorry, 1, 7, 8, 9.
Yeah.
The, the delegated planning is not, is from item 5. It's item 5 on the agenda as a supporting document. The only item in confidential is regarding the businesses, the business decision regarding the fall displays. There are no planning applications in confidential.
That's right. David, Matt is correct. You, you follow the, you follow the agenda and it comes under item 5. And you've got an appendix there showing item 5 in red. That's the delegated planning. Yeah, okay.
I, I apologize if there are any, with the typos of the numbers. Some members have not been terribly well over the past week or so. But we've managed to get the agendas out with just a few number typos like that.
That's, that's quite, that's quite okay, Matt, we understand.
So if we go back to that planning, Mr Chair, I'll take it back into the, the actual sharing of it.
Yeah, so we've got, I'd like to revisit this tonight, councillors. Because as Matt has already said, he submitted this as part of his delegated authority before the neighbours had responded to, to the East Riding Planning Authority. Since then, councillors and myself have, have been approached by neighbours from Grovelove Road. And in, in, they've been completely dismayed by this planning application, to say the least. And as you'll see, when Matt, after, not just yet, Matt, but we'll get the comments up. They are right in what they say. The, 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 the land is, it was, was formerly and still can be used as agricultural land. And the access to this land is up approximately a cart lane. It's not a road, it's a cart lane, which is a subtle difference between a cart lane and a road. And, and really, its, its only purpose is to service the house at the top through a gate of where the applicant, I believe, resides. And the neighbouring, neighbouring allotments, which are private allotments. And it's, it's not suitable really for any HGVs going down there. And, and as I said, the, the, the access from Grovelove Road, I would say is approximately 3 to 4 metres wide, if that, I have my doubts. And the lane itself is, is, is tight. Any HGV that goes down there with, if, if, if East Riding passes this, the, this development for three dwellings, it will be horrendous because of the neighbouring properties, where there's, there's, there's two dwellings, one at either side of this lane. And, and I'm, you know, like they say, the concern about the foundations and so on and so forth. And it's, it's completely, in the, this, this type of development, in my opinion, is completely wrong for this type of land. And I'd just throw it open to other members that have been approached or for comments, please. Yeah, David, councillor Tucker.
I entirely agree. I mean, looking at the letters objection, there are very strong letters of objection. And I think there's sufficient there, enough sufficient strength and common sense for us to say that we can't accept this. If you allow this sort of thing, every little tiny bit of land in Beverley is going to be overdeveloped and badly developed, it will create problems. So I think we reject. And I think we put that quite forcibly to the planning committee and then ultimately they will have to make this decision. But I think as a council, we should strongly object to it.
Um, Matt, can you just take the sharing off for a minute so I can see all councillors? On the, yeah, I've got you, Linda, go on then, yeah. Linda.
Oh, hang on, bear with me.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, great. There's a major issue here about emergency services as well, as well as the fact that it's a cart lane. And it's literally in and out, no turning area. How on earth do we get emergency services in there? I mean, it's just dangerous before it even starts. So I, I think there's a whole raft of reasons as to why we should object. I'm, I'm quite happy as an East Riding councillor to, to call it in on a whole raft of, of reasons. Yeah, and I think Beverley Town Council should also ask for it to be called in for a proper discussion as well.
Yeah. And I have, I have looked on the local plan councillors about this. And it's not even allocated for development of, of any sort on the local plan. Now, I have spoken to somebody, a councillor who's senior at East Riding. And he tells me that, well, yeah, but if it's in the settlement, within the settlement boundary, then that argument could be, could be flawed. But he said, yeah, he said, mention that, that it's not identified in the local plan for any sort of development. And, and you're right, Linda, about emergency services. That is concerned quite a few residents around there. And, and also the other concern, a major concern, is access onto Grovelove Road, which, as we all know, is a busy through affair, one of the main arterial roads, arterial roads in, in the town. And access would be horrendous. And the possibility of loss of parking space on Grovelove Road as well, should this be allowed to go ahead, which is already causing problems for residents down their parking. So, I mean, so have you picked up, Matt, what we've, what we're sort of objecting to?
Yeah, this, this, this is what I've jotted down, which if, if you feel it be, it fits the spirit of what you're saying. And of course, tinkering with any of the actual grammar to make it more grammatically correct tomorrow. And every town council wished to supersede its comments made on the 23rd of November, 2021. Having got to do the application in further detail, the town council expresses concern regarding the ability for HGV, et cetera, to access the site for construction due to the restricted width of the access road. The town council believes the development to be, this to be, this application to be an overdevelopment. In addition, issues such as access for emergency vehicles, exacerbation of, of parking issues that are already in, is already experienced within this community, I need to rephrase that slightly, et cetera, concern. This site, in addition, this site is not detailed within the local development plan for redevelopment. Every town council requests the application be called in to the appropriate planning committee at East Riding Yorkshire Council for wider consideration.
Yeah.
Something with better grammar.
Are we happy with that? Yeah. Great. Okay then, so with the rest of those delegated responses, are you all happy with it? Yeah. Okey dokey, so right then. And item six, Planning and Environment Applications. Now, Anne, this is what you was talking about, River Island, Unit 6, Flemington Centre, Flemington. And the applicant is applying for subdivision of existing retail unit into two separate units. Alteration to existing shopfront to create access doors, installation of fire doors, et cetera, to the rear, and to change use of units to all uses within use class E, A to G. And an additional use of use class F1A for the first floor. Linda.
Yeah, if you remember when Flemington was built, the whole idea of it was that it would be smaller units for smaller shops. And there was a lot of, of controversy when these large units were, were, were sold off to, to bigger retailers, saying that it was going to spoil the idea of Flemington, which was that it would be a very family friendly, a sort of a, a useful space for new businesses to come into as well. And therefore, I, I think that in the grand scheme of things, this kind of does what the originally, original idea of Flemington was, that, that we have these, these opportunities for smaller businesses. And, and therefore, I would suggest that we support this going forward.
Yeah, are we in agreement then? Great stuff.
Yeah, I've caught the thing, the aspect the councillor Willis pointed out as well, I've, I've added the, the two into it.
Land north of Minster Way, Woodman Sea. Now, this is Woodman Sea. Construction of a 500 space park and ride. Following approved acquisition. Approved access appearance landscaping layout scale and the erection of a terminus building. Approval of layout. Have we got anything to matter? Is it just the same old plans that we've seen previous? Have they altered, do we know?
If you'd like, I could share this, if you'd like, I, you just bear with me a moment. Right, so I think that indicates the location of where it is. Here is Minster Avenue, coming up the whole road, Minster Way. And the roundabout that's been built on Minster Way to facilitate properties, also facilitate the park and ride. Although initially, the plan, there were discussions of it coming down by the side of the railway lines, the access point. But it's going to be off the, the roundabout.
Right. Great. Anne.
We've waited long enough for this, so I think we wanted to go ahead, don't we? How many years? We waited 10 years.
More. So, right, so we, we fully accept what's been said.
Councillor Hall, I want to say something.
Yeah, councillor Hall, councillor Hopkins are both indicated to speak, Mr Chair.
Yeah. Chloe.
Sorry, Mr Chair, I was actually just having a quick look at some of the public comments. And the public comment mentioning that they don't see anything in the planning for charging points for electric cars is, I think, a relevant point. And something we should probably back up ourselves, especially with our commitment to wanting, you know, a greener setup. And, and to just perhaps ask that they consider ways that, that something like the park and ride can facilitate greener transport in and around the area.
I agree with you entirely, Chloe, and I think the rest of the committee will. And I don't think we should ask them to consider, I think we should ask them to, to make sure that it does happen with what has been said more recently by Number 10 about new bills as from next year, all new bills as from next year. They've got to have the proper electrical hook-up to the property. And so I think that it's, it's a must, is this. David.
I, I'd agree with that, though, though it does in fact mention the, the issue of charging points. But the numbers that they're talking about is far too small, in terms of the, of the current expectations. But the, there is another point which some, some people bring up, that there needs to be, as an absolute minimum, there needs to be some parking for motorhomes, which a considerable number of people use now. And we should at least consider whether there should be overnight parking for motorhomes. Though that's a separate issue from the issue as to simply whether there should be parking for motorhomes. Because of course, they're much bigger than the ordinary car.
Good point. Yeah. Could you include that then, Matt, as well, about motorhomes?
Just bear with me, I'll read what I'm drafting. So what I've drafted is every town council supports this application on the provision it becomes a leading example of facility with widespread electrical charging points. The current plan has not provided them to facilitate expected need. The town council would also request that East Riding Yorkshire Council consider providing adequate facilities for motorhomes to park on this site. And would you also like me to add something about the fact that this has been a long time coming and the council?
Yeah, yeah.
Like, I think I was on it as well.
I think, yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah, again, I'll do the, the grammatical bits tomorrow, but I've got the sentiments of what councillors would like.
Okey dokey, thanks, Matt. We're all in agreement with them, are we councillors? Yeah. And beach house, St Giles Croft. Westwood Conservation Area, fell one number cherry tree as the tree is unattractive and leaning to one side. What's your wishes on that then, councillors? David, Tucker.
I've seen the tree and unattractive is not necessarily a word I'd use, it is leaning to one side. There's no indication of if it's dangerous. If it's dangerous, I think we'd have to agree it. But I think because somebody doesn't like a tree because it's not very pretty is not necessarily a good reason for cutting it down. I think I'd need a report from the tree officer to say it was in danger of falling before we could agree it.
Yeah. David Arslan then, Chloe.
As I understand it, fruit trees come under a different classification from other trees. And you are in fact at liberty to cut them down if you choose.
Well, the conservation officer must think otherwise to what you've just stated there, otherwise.
Well, cherries are not necessarily fruit trees.
No.
Yeah.
No. Right. Chloe.
I was just going to back up councillor Tucker's point. I do think in the main, I would prefer us not to support the felling of a tree unless it is actually posing some kind of a danger to life or property. And otherwise, it seems like felling an important part of our biodiversity purely on aesthetic grounds, which is not really what we want.
So what I've got there, Mr Chair, is revised, it's a Beverley Town Council objects to this application as there is no evidence that trees endanger or in ill health and that, and that perceived attractiveness is not a suitable reason for felling.
Yeah.
We've all had it, if perceived attractive. We're going to be felled.
Yeah. All right then, are we agreed? Yeah, right then, next one, 16 Mace View, Beverley, Tree Preservation Order. Kelgate Manor Farm, Long Lane, Beverley. 1986 reference 455A1, crown lift two number sycamore trees to 6 metres and crown reduce lateral branches to the east side by 15% back to growth points to give 2.4 to 4.5 metres clearance to house. Improve daylight at the base of the trees and reduce the risk of failure. Crown juice one number sycamore tree B by reducing lateral branches to the southeast aspects by 15% back to growth points to 2.4. to two point four to four point five metres clearance to the house. Improve daylight at the base of trees and reduce risk of failure. And Matt's put in his comments that we don't object to this application on condition the work is carried out over time. That will least negative effect on wildlife. Are we agreed on that?
Agreed.
I think, Mr Chair, Mr Chair, I think you just went one on one on too many, because if you just go back up the sixteen woodlands.
Yeah. Sixteen Woodlands, sorry, Matt, for that. Sixteen Woodlands, erection of a single story extension to side. And construction of a flat roof, dormer to rear and alterations to existing single story extension to rear. And again, the suggestion from Matt is that we have no objection to this application of provision that it does not negatively impact neighbouring properties. Okay? Yeah.
And I just, if I could just comment, Mr Chair, whilst these are all suggested comments, when councillors get the applications, when they dock the agenda, when they look into it and they feel that they do want to object or want to change that, that, you know, everyone is more, they can do that, these are just additional comments to help the council. If councillors do feel alternative comments are better, please do give them.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Matt. Lons Cottage, One Bloochshire Lane. Erection of a detached garage. Are we in agreement? Yeah. Eighty seven Berden Road, Beverley, erection of a single story extension to the rear. All agreed. Twelve Fisher Square, Beverley. Erection of a single, single and two story extension to the rear. Yeah, agreed. Sixty nine Minster Moogate, variation of condition two materials. Of planning permission, erection of a single story extension to rear, construction of a dormer window to second floor at the rear and replacement of an existing roof of two story extension. And to allow a white render to be changed to brick to match existing. I think we're all in agreement with that. TSB. Saturday market display of a new external signage following the removal of existing and internal alterations, decoration. Are we in agreement? Yeah. Nineteen Waltham Lane. Erection of a carport amended. Now, we have had a letter which you've all had sight of. And a couple of letters, actually, from neighbouring residents. I'll hand you over to Matt.
Yeah, in total, you've had four letters that have been sent to us, forwarded on through four emails. Three were three were in one email, one was in another. Again, this is the issue of, it's an issue of, because of the way we do delegated, it's partly because the sheer number that we get to the town, Beverly Town Council, means that we can't always see them at every meeting because the deadlines fall between meetings. We'd have to have a meeting every week if they were to be considered fully by committee. And when we look at the the delegated, I look at them using the material considerations, but also do look at any comments that residents make as well. But because of the way the times fall, I can make a delegate comment after that residents put on their comments. But the deadline for those comments is still before the council could have viewed it, so it can fall quite awkwardly. They have, the applicant has submitted amended plans, which is why I've been able to bring it back to this committee. When looking at it purely on the, from the, from a clerk's delegated perspective, purely from a using the material considerations, there appear to be no reasons for objection that I could quantify based on some, we can't second guess what somebody will use it for, they have a garage and they want a carport. Part of what I could put isn't in the cabin, the realms of, well, they should use their garage, so they shouldn't have to build a carport. The, some of the comments that the residents have made include comments based on the core of the cars that depicted in the imagery, the sort of cars used. The, the comments from the conservation officer are in line with the fact that they don't have any objections to this as the development isn't a historic development, it's in a historic Georgian area of the town, but the development itself isn't purely historic. However, the concerns of the residents need to be taken into consideration as well as to whether any of their comments fit within either what councillors would like to say or 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 material considerations, which is why now because of the amount of concerns from residents and the recent submission with the remaining documents, I brought it back to councillors to make a decision because I feel that there is an element of controversy here because so many residents have concerns about it. But the limitation of what we have commented on previously are using the non-emotional, non-emotive material considerations instead of seeing it at face value. So I'll open it to you, Mr Chair and councillors.
Thank you. Comments, councillors? Linda.
Yeah, I did have a resident contact me about this. And this particular resident was not really looking at it rationally when when it was first submitted, so I I've had subsequent conversations with that that resident who who said he thinks the amended plans are actually quite reasonable. And and I noticed that this particular person's comments aren't actually listed now on the on the site, so I I think they must have been withdrawn. So that that's quite interesting that this person who was quite unhappy about it now thinks it's acceptable.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, Chloe.
I have to say, I've only had a brief look over this, and so I've not had a chance to read all of the residents' objections, but the couple that I've had a look at. I'm I'm not convinced of their substance, if I'm honest. You know. I I don't think we've got really strong grounds to object to this, to be honest.
I think so. So are you proposing that then, Chloe? That we just accept it? Yeah. Are we all agreed?
Yeah, I think so, I think if there's a real problem, the planning officers will comment on it anyway. And clearly, they haven't, they haven't expressed an opinion at the moment, but if they don't like it, they will say so.
Okay, Linda, thank you very much. We're all agreed then? No objections.
So take it into consideration, the amended planning documents, the town council expresses no objection.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got that written down, Mr Chair.
Okay. Item seven. Proposed parking bay. Surely that should say changes instead of charges.
Sorry, it should, yes, but sorry, Mr Chair. I had a very fuzzy head that week. Yeah, and I've submitted the, you've got the documents there.
Yeah.
And they're, they're, they're very minimal changes, but they could have an impact, so if councillors have any comments, I can feed them back.
Right, so. Let's start with here then, Grovelove Road. So there you are, Grovelove Road, if you've got them before you. I can't honestly see the logic in that. Taking two. Uh, taking parking bays out and replacing it with a section of no waiting at any time. To my mind, parking is is more important than no waiting. And I think that personally, I think that we should, it should be recommended that we leave it as is. And, you know, controlled parking zone bay from Monday to Saturday, eight AM to six PM, one hour no return or resident permit holders. Anne.
Yeah, I agree, the parking on there is essential for the residents because they don't have any garages or anything like that. And I really do not see what difference it would make.
No.
If 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 you've got no waiting there, you can still get down the road, I believe.
Yeah, absolutely.
No, I agree with you.
David.
I quite agree.
David.
It it seemed to me that they were trying to make provision for turning at that point. But I'd agree with what people have said previously.
Okey dokey, so we 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 object to that, Matt, taking him.
So we've got parking is a significant issue on Grovelove Road and the bays should remain as they are.
Yeah. And then Norwood. Next to the Apple Tree House. So they're removing, again, controlled parking zone bay to be replaced with restricted disabled persons parking place. Do we agree with that? The thing is, I understand why it's there, but if that, the logic, that is obviously the the disabled, the disabled persons, you know, that are going to Apple Tree House. Is they can't always guarantee a parking place for the disabled vehicle. So this will almost guarantee, you know, eighty percent, eighty five percent of the time. So I I I think we have no, I would move that we have no objection to this.
So I say the town council supports this one.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Thank you. And last but not least, removal of controlled parking zone bay. Albert Terrace. To again, section of no waiting at any time restriction. And again, that, that there is similar to what Groville is. And I just think that why take a section of a controlled parking zone out when it's a devil's own drop getting parked down there at the best of times?
It's pretty difficult getting parked for the surgery.
Yes.
But there is no problem, I I think they think there's no problem turning out a great burn there.
Yeah.
To go to go to the right, there isn't a problem, unless you've got some great articulated lorry and you shouldn't be down there with that anyway.
No, I shouldn't, no.
The, 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 the problem is not for people coming out of Grebden Lane. It's from, for the fact that if you're proceeding down toward the Leesers, there's in effect, single way traffic at that point. And if the single lane traffic is to be allowed to get through, you need the traffic that is wanting to proceed in the other direction to have some parking space to to allow it through.
You've got the same problem further along. I don't know anything about that. If you look further along, you've got lots of parking. Nobody's objecting to that.
Yeah.
So forgive me, Mr Chair, these things sometimes pass me by as a non-driver. So what, so what it looks like, so you're saying what they're suggesting here is to almost create a passing point.
Yes.
I don't think that will create a passing point, I just think it will add further congestion.
Agreed, yeah, I agree with you, Pete.
Linda and then Chloe and then David.
I can see why they're suggesting this because there there is a six foot, as you can see. And currently, the the parking bay is tied up to the end of that six foot, which is, which goes to that very modern house built on the top of the old Greyfeyers monastery. And and I think if you, if you're coming out of that six foot, then it's difficult to see round. So I would suggest that is why they're trying to do this, but the only people it will benefit is the people who live in that, in that house. I don't think it's going to benefit anybody else, so I I see no point. I bet they're the only people who've commented.
Yeah, but in that, just coming back on that, Linda. In that case, if, have they got access up that six foot to that? Low Friars?
Yes.
What, with a vehicle?
Yes.
So then why haven't we got a solid white line there ashed out?
Goodness knows. But the only people this is going to benefit are those people who have access to that, to that house. I I just see no, no reason for this at all. The the problems are further up the road, as Anne says.
Chloe.
I have to say, as a cyclist, it's a bit of an awkward road to get down precisely because of the amount of parking and everything coming down. I can't see that this will affect it all that much one way or the other in terms of actually making it any easier. You know, like, you know, if I, if I go down that road. Yeah, it it's always awkward because of the parking. And unless you're going to take out all the parking or restrict it far more than what they've suggested, I don't think this one little amendment will greatly change anything.
Yeah. David.
Yeah, completely agree, I mean, I I cycle down there and I drive down there, and it's one of those things that in any historic town, it's congested, there's other problems which are greater because people do have difficulty parking. People do get by, they're patient, they wait, it's a bit of a hassle, but, you know, people manage, there's never been a massive blockage as far as I'm concerned, I mean, I lived in St Giles Croft for many years. And you just manage somehow, I think the problems that were created at the surgery with reduced parking are even greater. I also know the house at the Friar's house there has been there for many, many years and they've managed. You just have to ease out gently, so my, my, my view would be decline.
Yeah.
I agree with David, but also you've got problems further along because outside the surgery, there's a line there, but you can park with disabled. I parked there when I'm taking Michael. And so it's, like David said, it's a problem all along and you just have to be patient and wait and let people through and whatever, yeah.
Okay then, sir.
What we kind of get, Mr Chair, is that the town council objects as the application, as there appears to be little logic to the removal of the parking bay, it will not positively address the wider access issues of Albert Terrace and will only serve to reduce a part, to remove a parking space in brackets, parking spaces in this area of town are a premium.
Is that agreed? Yeah. Okey dokey. So moving on then, that completes the planning applications. Item eight then, to consider the exclusion the public from the meeting on the grounds that confidential information in relation to business contracts and legal matters shall be disclosed, Public Bodies Admissions of Meetings Act nineteen sixty. And I move from the chair that that the public be excluded from the meeting on the grounds that confidential information in relation to business contracts and legal matters shall be disclosed, Public Bodies Admissions of Meetings Act nineteen sixty. Is that seconded? Thanks, Chloe.